Oh, like, oh, just. I think I took those shoes off.
Hey.
Does it need one for? No, just, just the back.
Here, go on, I take four.
Uh.
I think you've got.
I just, um, I just said I.
Um.
Just to keep that forget.
You have.
Like, I have. You know, I just. I have scrubs. I know, which is helpful because. But that's just the one thing I. Okay.
This is exhausting.
Thank you.
You got your stuff on over here.
Yeah.
Hi, folks. Um, how is the audio on that?
Hello, Mary. You sound good.
You sound good.
Good, because last time I, I didn't have my earbuds in and the audio wasn't very good.
That was my audio by chance.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will do a test check as well. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
I hear littles.
I have my slider open. I think it's the kids playing on the creek.
Oh, how fun.
You know, those dang kids.
Yeah.
Is there this old man? He played fun.
I know I'm not. I was gonna say hi to Sue.
Hi, Lisa.
Hey, Sue. How are you?
Fine. You guys aren't sharing a screen, huh?
I asked him if we could share a screen. I said it would be easier and he's like, no, you have to have your separate one.
Oh.
He's sitting five feet away from me. On his and I'm on mine. Yeah.
You just have to be careful when you both talk, that you don't talk at the same time.
I know. It's, I know, it's silly. We can hear the ice cream truck in our neighborhood.
Ooh, that sounds good.
I know. It's my favorite time of the day.
Mayor Moore, it is 5:00 PM. If you'd like to start the meeting?
Thank you, Lord. Okay. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Cattati City Council and the Successory Agency for the former Cattati Community Redevelopment Agency and Cattati Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly give us a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Hancock.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. We will come back. I do see him on there. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Vice Chair Lemus. Vice Chair Lemus.
I think she's muted.
And we will come back to Vice Chair Lemus. Chair Murphy.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lemus.
I'm sorry. I just turned on my sound. What was it?
Just taking roll call?
Here.
Thank you. Back to you, Mayor Moore.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will now open up the meeting for public comment. If we have any public comment on there.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And to our attendees who are listening tonight, you can use the raised hand icon on your desktop or smart device. You can also dial *9 from just your telephone. And at this time, I see no public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Um, and for those in attendance, if you do have any questions, feel free to raise your hand and we'll go ahead and see if we can address them as we go through. Uh, thank you so much. So now we're gonna go on to the presentation and I believe that's gonna be handled by our Community Development Director, Mr. House.
That's correct, sir. I will request roll as Lauren gets the PowerPoint going. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you so much. My name's Noah House, Community Development Director for the city here. And with me, we have Senior Planner JP for John Paul Harries, uh, as well as Senior Planner Joel Galbert, uh, City Manager Obie is in attendance, as is the City Attorney John Barker. Uh, he has reviewed these slides. Uh, there's a lot of legal information, so I really thank his attention to detail as we will be getting into some, uh, legal requirements and, uh, as always, appreciated to have some legal input. Um, I wanna be respectful of everyone's time. There's lots to cover, uh, so we're gonna go quickly, but the goal of this is to provide an overview. Uh, obviously, you have these slides and, and it's, uh, ideal that you keep these as crib notes and we're happy to have a follow-up presentation on any of these topics, uh, if needed or requested by either the council or the commission. But this is something that I think is the best practice, you know, every few years, especially if you have some, uh, new folks either elected or appointed, uh, just as a refresher or, uh, hopefully there's some new information, uh, for folks, uh, everybody in attendance. So with that, I'm gonna try to advance the slides, but Lauren, it seems like I might need your assistance to go to the next slide. Thank you. So here's our agenda. Like I said, kind of ambitious. There's a lot here, um, but again, I, I hope so it's new, at least some of it for some of you, and we'll just get right into it. So we'll go to the next slide, Lauren. So the authority for land use, uh, that's given to cities and counties is, it comes from the police power, uh, that's kind of provided in the Cali- or the federal constitution. Uh, it's the basis for all land use regulation and it's tied to the city's ability or the government's ability to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And then the California Constitution, um, kind of buttresses or supports this essentially as a function of the federalist system. So, next slide. So, uh, most of the authority that we're gonna talk to comes from a, uh, variety of, of many, many state laws. Uh, I wanted to provide this again, kind of as crib notes for folks. You have this. If you want to get into any of the specifics, there's the actual government code sections. Uh, but, uh, these set forth the requirements that we're gonna talk about in the legal framework. In some cases, they have to be met explicitly. In others, uh, the city can be more restrictive in what the rules we adopt, but they can never be less restrictive than the state law, obviously. Next slide. Just briefly to touch on the roles of the Planning Commission and City Council in Cattati, we are a general law city. Uh, that's opposed to a charter city. Charter cities can have their own kind of unique charters which govern, uh, how they're structured. Cattati follows kind of an established government code, um, and is called a general law city. We are also a city council, city council, city manager form of government where the, uh, city manager is the primary administrator directing day-to-day operations and employees. Council directs the city manager and appoints planning commission. So I, so the planning commission is subordinate to the city council. Uh, and the council provides a broad policy direction. Um, the commission cannot direct staff to, uh, separately without, uh, kind of implementing the direction of the council. And decisions by both of these bodies are gonna generally fall into two land use categories. One is quasi-legislative or quasi-judicial. Then we'll get into more of those specifics. Next slide. So continuing on to this, you know, uh, the commission and the council are gonna hold notice public hearings and public meetings on land use actions. Uh, all the evidence and testimony must be, um, heard or presented, uh, as a part of making that decision. The public hearing process is just enumerated there. Uh, it's, the, the Planning Commission has adopted a set of bylaws which, which establish this process and the city councils, uh, is enumerated in the city code, uh, but just to touch on that for, um, some folks in the public, most of you are very familiar with these processes. Uh, and it's important to note that decision makers must actively participate. I'll touch on that later. Uh, but in order for the decisions to be made valid, and generally, your actions will be approved through either a resolution or an ordinance. Next slide. So general plans, um, in California, we are required to plan. Uh, that is somewhat unique. Uh, not every state has a requirement or a mandate that communities do planning, but California is one of them. Uh, and that mandate, uh, kind of is enumerated in the requirement for a general plan first and foremost. The general plan is essentially the constitution for all development and land use in Cattati. Uh, it's a comprehensive, long-term document. It includes, uh, land within the city and some land outside the city, uh, in an area called our sphere of influence. Uh, most people are familiar with that, but it's usually the space between the city, city boundary and the urban growth boundary in the situation of Cattati. And the state law requires certain elements of the general plan to be updated, but not all of them. So you will see some communities that have very old general plans, although it's not a best practice, it is done, but with certain elements, uh, updated, uh, according to the state law. We'll go into the next slide. There are seven mandatory elements of the general plan. They're listed here. Housing is one of those that is required to be updated, uh, on, on a regular basis every eight years. Generally, could be four years, but, uh, that's if you're kind of under a mandate from the state to accelerate that update. So we are under an eight-year cycle. Our next housing element cycle, you folks who have heard me talk about it, uh, starts in 2023 and we are anticipating to get our arena allocation formalized kind of mid-year this year. Uh, and I will be presenting, uh, kind of our, our house, annual housing report, uh, in March to the council before submitting that to the state, uh, before April 1st. Uh, worth noting that, uh, certain communities have to have an environmental justice requirement. Uh, and that's if you fall into a, a defined disadvantaged community. Cattati does not have that, but that can be a requirement in certain instances. And communities can have other elements beyond this, these required elements. And, uh, for example, the Cattati general plan includes an economic vitality element as well as an implementation element. And I will say the implementation elements are very critical because as most of you are familiar with, the general plan is very general and has a lot of policy documents. Uh, and having an element which spells out how you implement that policy is, is very helpful to staff and the community because it essentially provides a, a guidebook for how all of that general policy is going to be implemented, uh, during the life of that general plan. Other examples, uh, include maybe historic preservation or climate adaptation elements that cities have chosen to implement. Uh, but as I mentioned, the city has an economic vitality, an implementation element, and then these other seven mandatory elements. We'll go to the next slide. Oh, I apologize. Uh, well, we will skip this slide. I thought I corrected this error, but, um, general plans are required to be comprehensive and long-term. They must be integrated and internally consistent and that consistency requires both vertical consistency and horizontal consistency. So horizontal is defined as being harmony amongst the policies that are set forth in the various elements. And vertical, uh, essentially talks about, uh, the policies of the general plan feed into the specific plans which feed into the zoning code and they all have to be in alignment. Because of this requirement, uh, decisions that are made, um, in support of the general plan are kind of deemed by the court to be, um, basically, the courts give a lot of deference to cities because of this, it, cities' decision-making because of this, uh, consistency requirement. So because the general plan is a mandate of the state, because that's adopted through a public process that has, uh, numerous policies that are vetted and then those other documents are required to be built and internally consistent, courts generally give deference to the city's decision-making authority, uh, with regards to compliance with the general plan. Um, there's, again, as we talked about, there's two, uh, kind of forms of decisions that are made quasi-legislative and quasi-judicial. Uh, quasi-legislative does not have the similar due process requirements, uh, that a quasi-judicial requirement would be, and that's more policymaking. So specific plans, zoning ordinances are good examples of that, and we'll get into more examples of the quasi-judicial, uh, in a little bit. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So specific plans, uh, they're essentially an extension of or just below a general plan. They're intended to implement a general plan in specific areas of a community. Uh, obviously, this, the zoning land use has to be consistent with that. And we have two specific plans in Cattati, the downtown specific plan, uh, which was adopted, I believe, in 2009, and the Centera Way specific plan, which was adopted in 2001. I'll go to the next slide. So following in this hierarchy are zoning regulations and the zoning divides the city into various districts, generally separating the land uses. Um, except in certain areas, as Cattati, we have mixed-use areas where, um, residential and commercial land uses can be combined and there's rules about how that's done. Generally, it's intended to, um, protect from the impacts of one land use of another. Uh, again, courts are generally hands-off on, um, zoning decisions because of this, all the work that we've talked about previously that goes into validating those. Uh, and again, it's tied to the public welfare. So as long as zoning is, uh, or zoning is seen as being reasonably portrayed or connected to public welfare and therefore, uh, it's supported by, uh, the law in cities making these decisions and classifying various properties. Again, it must be consistent with the general plan. And changes to the zoning, uh, we'll go to the next slide. Are essentially done through two ways, reclassification of property. So that's what's called a map amendment. So one property being zoned from one district to another or changed. And then text amendments, um, which is changing the actual language of the regulation, so the zoning code. These are done through ordinance rather than a resolution, resolution, and that's a legislative act. Uh, typically requires two separate meetings and then has a 30-day period, uh, before it goes into effect, as most of you are aware. We'll go to the next slide. So, uh, citizens are, can kind of directly affect the law of a city and obviously even the state through initiatives and referendum process. And they can, uh, either approve or deny legislative acts. And so they can make changes to the general plan or specific plan, text amendments through the initiative and referendum process. It's supported in the California Constitution. Uh, but they also have to be consistent with the general plan. Interestingly, uh, if a citizen proposes an initiative or referendum to make changes, land use changes, it does not have to comply with SEQA. So that's kind of an interesting ke- carve-out. Um, it's my understanding that if a city council sponsors a, a, uh, citizen-proposed initiative or referendum, then that does trigger SEQA. However, I think the city attorney, um, has some, or did chime in, so there, there is a legal question on that. And John, I'm like.
There, there isn't actually a legal question about that particular aspect. If the council sponsors an initiative on its own, uh, puts a, puts a measure on the ballot on its own and is subject to, the city has to comply with SEQA. Um, there's this weird nuance in the, in the citizens' initiative process. The way it works is the citizens get the signatures. Um, and if the, the signatures are adequate, the council has the choice, the city council has the choice of either placing the citizens' initiative on the ballot or just enacting it then and there. And, uh, the law is that if the council enacts it then and there, um, it doesn't have to comply with SEQA. It's deemed to be part and parcel of the voter initiative, so SEQA does not apply in that context.
Thank you, sir. So I guess I had the legal question. There wasn't one except for, uh, in my mind. So thank you for clarifying. Uh, so anyway, that's kind of an interesting, unique, um, element of the law and, and how some of our land use regulations are made. Uh, we'll go to the next slide. So, um, talking about some of the zoning processes, um, entitlements are essentially most of the decisions that the planning commission would make. So, uh, use permits, design review, variances. And the decision-making process, uh, allows for some flexibility in how the zoning is applied. Um, obviously, it has to be consistent with the general plan and this is considered quasi-judicial. So in this instance, the bodies making the decisions are, are judging, uh, the kind of, the merits of a project. Uh, if granted, then that grants property rights that are transferable. So if a use permit allows a specific type of business, then that business is allowed to remain in place uh, and can even be sold or transferred to other people, uh, even if the city makes changes to the law that would not allow it to occur, um, in the present day. So that's how things get grandfathered in, and that's a common term that the public uses. Um, and the city cannot make those non-transferable because it is a property right. And then it does, so in order to take that away, the owners of that right And then it does, so in order to take that away, the owners of that right have to be given due process. So there's a public hearing uh in order to revoke a use permit similar to um the process to grant the use per. Go to the next slide. Huh, I apologize. I'm not sure what's happening here, but this slide kind of just talks about the process uh that's required. I'll just go ahead and skip this one, Laura, because it's a little confusing. But essentially, similar to how a, a permit is granted, there has to be notice of the meeting, everyone has to be given a chance to speak. Applicants are allowed to present their case. Um, decisions must be made on unbiased uh by unbiased bodies. And so I would just encourage everyone, you cannot prejudge. So if someone says, well, what do you think about this, or how are you gonna vote on this? Uh, please do not uh make a commitment until you've presented all the facts. Um, some of the facts will include what's called ex parte communication. So because uh all the laws require the decisions to be made in a fully public transparent process. If uh an individual gets information that may not be presented in the full packet, so maybe you go visit a property. That's actually information that's, that's ex parte, it's in addition to. Uh, or maybe if someone calls you and says, hey, they, they share something with you, um, the applicant or a neighbor, then it's, it's um, you're you're required to disclose that. It is allowed to be used to make the decision, but you should share that information with the entire decision-making body. So everyone has a chance to understand uh all the relevant pieces of information. Um, there's a, in, in order, you must be present and, and be aware of the situation in order to decide on it. And so um you'll see some, some situations where a council member or a commissioner is asked to review past meetings. If they weren't there, but so like in the case of a general plan or something that takes multiple steps. And maybe we have a new commissioner or a new council member come on. Uh, they could watch those previous hearings to bring themselves up to speed, and then they're allowed to participate in that decision. But they have to uh fully inform themselves in order to uh have a full understanding of all the facts in order to be uh part of the decision-making process. We'll go on to subdivisions. So these are governed by a specific element in state law, the subdivision map act. Uh, there is flexibility in how cities implement this, but uh there, the city's individual regulations must be consistent with the subdivision map act and the general plan. Um, cities are allowed to regulate the design and improvement requirements of subdivisions. Uh, our subdivision criteria lives in Title seventeen point seven of our municipal code. Uh, there's requirements for the processing, and again, where the subdivision map act is silent, the city can go further, but it can't be contrary. And we'll go to the next slide. Uh, so subdivision is defined as division of improved or unimprovement land for the purpose of sale, lease, or financing. Um, it's essentially done in two different processes. If there's four or fewer lots, then that's a parcel map. If there's five or more lots, then that's a tentative map. Um, all subdivisions in, are two-step processes, so it's either the parcel map or a tentative map goes through uh a decision-making process where the community development department is the lead staff. And then the final map comes back where more things are detailed, uh the public improvement details are worked out. And that final map is uh process is headed up by the public works department. We both participate in each process, but uh again, the first step is the, the CD department is lead. The second step, the public works department is lead. Uh, we actually have a final map on the council agenda for later on this evening for the Jamie Lane project as a good example of that. We'll go to the next slide. And here, I am going to turn it over to senior planner John Paul Harries to talk to you about CEQA.
He's muted.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna talk about CEQA. Um, CEQA is short for the California Environmental Quality Act. It was um enacted in nineteen seventy by the state legislature, and it's California's um broadest environmental law. And um it applies pretty much to all discretionary projects that um the city engages in. Either um as a project proponent or in permitting discretionary projects where we have some uh judgment uh re- related to the project. As well as um anything that we may be involved in funding, either in part or in whole. Um, can you go back one slide, please? Anyway, so there's four key uh parts to uh CEQA, or there should say there's four large purpose areas. First, CEQA is um largely intended to provide transparency, and that is to disclose to the public and decision-makers uh the significant environmental effects of a proposed project or action or activity by government agency. And we do that through uh uh these documents, um either initial study, a negative declaration, uh or, or a full-blown environmental impact report. Um, and, but it also discloses the process that the city or the public agency has utilized in approving these discretionary projects. And we do that by providing findings and in the cases where we are going to impact the environment with statements of overriding consideration. Another key purpose is to prevent or minimize damage to the environment. I'm gonna touch on this a little more uh because it's very different from NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act, which um is really procedural-only. Our, the CEQA actually requires um public agencies to minimize or prevent damage to the environment where it's feasible to do so. And you do that by examining project alternatives, uh implementing mitigation measures on the project, and then monitoring the project afterward to ensure that it, that it meets the measures that you've placed on a project or conditioned a project uh to prevent or minimize damage to the environment. Uh, the other thing uh CEQA's purpose is to do is to engage uh with public, with the public. And we do that through the, the public review of these environmental documents. Before those documents are prepared, we, there's scoping meetings that will be held. There's public noticing about the nature of uh the project uh that's being considered. Uh, there's public review uh of the document, there's hearings to approve and certify the documents. And then there's actually the judicial process that follows that. Additionally, CEQA is intended to provide for inter-agency coordination. So that means that we're talking to Caltrans, and we're talking to uh California Fish and Wildlife. And we're talking to whatever other agency may have um an interest or, or, or a legal mandate to be uh involved in a project that, that the city is considering. Uh, next slide, please. Now, the law itself is written into the California Public Resources Code. Um, as well, there is a series of CEQA guidelines. Uh, these are uh pretty much administrative regulations. You'll often hear us referring to the guidelines. Um, the guidelines basically reflect the requirements of the Public Resources Code. Um, as well as include court decisions and interpretations of the Public Resources Code and, and as well as practical planning considerations. Um, those are, those are located in the California Code of Regulations. Additionally, um, uh, there's the code, and then there's what the court says uh the law means. And, and that's a big part of CEQA. Every year, there are a number of court decisions that um that have ma- big effects on how public agencies uh will review uh projects under CEQA and as well as implement uh CEQA itself. And then there's also city regulations and plans, and these especially come in when we talk about thresholds of significance. Um, how, where an impact actually becomes significant. Uh, the cities often are the ones that, or the public agencies are the ones that make those uh determinations. Okay, next, next slide. Uh, so CEQA, where it applies, so it applies to government actions or projects. And these are, as I kind of mentioned earlier, these are activities directly undertaken by a public agency or uh an activity that's financed by a public agency. Um, or a private activity. The private activity is, is not necessarily um subject to CEQA. But where we have our action in approving uh private activity, that discretionary approval is what is uh is where CEQA becomes applicable. CEQA only applies to state and local public agencies. Um, and then um our discretion is kind of based on our ordinance. So are we looking at design review versus a use permit and how we apply our discretion in those various um uh considerations? And a project is the whole of an action, so if we have a large um project that had, they have multiple pieces to it. Uh, commercial component and a residential component, and maybe a park component and a roadway component. You look at the entire project as, when that comes in. You don't break it down into individual little pieces or the individual permits that might be required. You look at the entire project um and, and, and analyze it in that respect. And it applies when there's any potential for a physical uh effect on the environment. Either direct or if you can reasonably foresee indirect uh physical changes um resulting from a decision that you might make. Okay, next slide. Uh, where it does not apply, ministerial decisions. These are things like um uh when we issue building permits. Uh, these are not um areas where we exercise judgment in approving something. If it complies with the code, it's, it's approved. Um, so ministerial decisions, CEQA is not applicable. If um a planning commission or the city council chose to deny a project, you do not need a CEQA analysis to deny a project. Um, continuing administrative activities like purchasing supplies or anything related to personnel or general policy and procedure-making where there's no potential impact to the environment, those are, are exempt from CEQA. Also preliminary actions, like where you may decide you want to fund uh a, a particular effort. As long as you're not committing to any specific project and you, you know, you still have the ability to uh review and impose mitigation measures or adopt project alternatives, uh CEQA would not be applicable in those early actions. Um, where there's no possibility of a direct or indirect physical uh change to the environment, then CEQA would not be applicable. And then uh when the legislation, legislatures propose um laws and bills uh to be enacted by the state legislature, those are also exempt uh from CEQA. Next slide, please. Um, and then this, this is just the, the, the kind of laundry list of all the areas that um, that we look at uh when any, any project comes forward. Um, we'll look all the way from aesthetics to wildfire and everything in between. Some of these things may not strike you like um as necessarily environmental, but they are included. And that would be uh some things like perhaps cultural resources um are included within CEQA as well as um uh some, in some places like population or housing um are also included. Um, next slide, please. So it's, it's, essentially CEQA is a three-step process. Um, first, uh the lead agency uh determines whether or not a project is even subject to CEQA at all. And if it is subject to CEQA, is it exempt? These are the first questions we'll ask when we look at a project. And the lead agency is the agency with the primary uh responsibility for approving a project. So the city, for projects that occurring in the city, it's often the city is the lead agency. And we are then uh responsible for conducting that CEQA review. And then um let's just say it is subject, then we would ask, is it exempt? There are two types of exemptions. Uh, some are statutory exemptions. These are basically absolute exemptions. The legislature has by statute said these particular activities are exempt. An example of that is ministerial approvals. That's a statutory exemption. Um, and, and then there's a number of them that are either kind of action, things you may be considering or um in some cases, specific types of projects uh where the legislature has said that they are exempt. And then there are categorical exemptions. These are uh areas where the resources agency has determined that they're um that there's a very low chance that they would uh have a significant effect on the environment. And examples of this would be reusing a building, for example, taking one use. Uh, one use moves out of an existing building and another use moves into that building. There's no change. Um, there's no major change in the type of activity that's happening there. That type of thing would be um exempt. Also, maybe if you're just replacing or reconstructing a building, those would be exempt. Uh, would be a categorical exemption. Um, of course, any of these exemptions could go away if there are some unusual circumstances, so we're always looking out uh for that kind of thing. Okay, next up, our next slide, please. And then so if it's not exempt, um, one of two things, if, if we're trying to determine what level of environmental review would occur or is necessary, we do, we complete what's called an initial study. And it starts with just basically a checklist like you see over there. Um, over time, these checklists have become quite robust. Uh, it, it, a long time ago, you used to just put a little checkmark in a certain box. Uh, now, and it just, we call that a naked checklist. If uh someone comes in with a naked checklist now, it raises a bunch of flags. So these um initial studies are quite robust in discussing every answer uh to every one of these questions. Uh, so it's, it uh, it, it's an effort to even complete an initial study. In some cases, you may want to just jump right to an environmental impact report when um, you know, you don't really want to go through this exercise because you already know that there's a good uh possibility that you're gonna have uh significant environmental impacts. And you can skip this initial process and go right to the environmental impact report. But um uh, these have to be made on evidence. It has to be contained in the record uh of the project record, and it has to be based on, you know, e- evidence, which is like facts and expert opinions or reasonable assumptions. Um, and, and, and fair arguments that someone can make um that something could have an impact. You have to give consideration to pretty much any fair argument um that's reasonable and it, and it's a uh, uh, comment on, on the project. Next up. Next slide, please. And then um, let's say the initial study shows that the project would not have a significant effect, then, whoops, go back again, please. Thank you. Um, so if we go through the initial study, um, one of two things can happen. Either it does not have a significant effect and we can file a mitigated negative deck. Or sometimes what we'll do is um, we'll look at mitigating measures. Um, so things that we can do to the project or that the project component could add to the project um that would mitigate those impacts to less than a negative, uh, less than a significant impact. In that situation, we would file what's called a mitigated negative declaration. But it's, it's a, it's a negative declaration that the project would not be creating significant impacts. Um, if it will have a significant impact, then the lead agency must prepare an environmental impact report. And there is a, there's a, there's a well-defined process for the preparation and review of an, of uh EIR. And there, there's specific contents that are required, such as a project description um as well as the environmental in, impacts that uh could potentially be uh in, uh, could be significant. Mitigation measures as well as project alternatives and which are Mitigation measures as well as project alternatives, which are required to be in that document. So we have to look at other alternatives that meet the same goal as the project description. And there's specific findings that must be made to approve projects requiring an EIR. And like I had mentioned earlier, there's a substantive mandate. And that is, public agencies must refrain from approving projects with significant environmental effects. So NEPA, it, it, it may determine, this is under the national, like they might put out a document, say it's going to have all these effects. And then that's it. There's no requirement for them to go the next step and actually require that project to mitigate those impacts. CEQA has had, takes it to another level and says you have to do it if there are feasible alternative or mitigation measures that can substantially lessen or avoid those effects. And then next slide, please. And then, so there's ways that you can protect the environment. And that is you change the proposed project. You can impose conditions on the project to lessen those impacts. On the broader sense, we can adopt plans or ordinances that control a broad class of projects. You can choose alternative ways or projects to meet the same need. Or you can deny the project. And then one other thing, those CEQA, like I said, requires you to identify these mitigation measures. And one thing you can do is if you find that changing or altering the project is not feasible or that the environmental damage is unavoidable, there are, there might be economic, legal, social, technical, other benefits that outweigh the adverse environmental effects. And you can approve the project if you adopt a series of statement of overriding considerations and you disclose essentially why you would be approving the project despite the fact that it has significant impacts. So there is a way, a method of moving forward with a project. But all that has to be very well documented and part of the record. And I believe that closes my CEQA presentation. Can you go to the next slide, please? Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John Paul. So I'm going to just speak a little bit about kind of the, the rights that are established with approvals and kind of how, how project applicants and the cities are able to kind of use these rights or, or request additional benefits for the public from a discretionary request. So starting with kind of the AVCO rule, this is essentially something that grants rights to someone who has pursued a permit in good faith, even if the city changes the rules after the permit's been issued or approved. And so this is similar to grandfathered, but it's, it's not necessarily for something that's been established, but more something that's been, substantial effort have been put into establishing it. So some examples of this are building permits, substantial work, those types of things. And then entitlements are similar because they're protected by due process. So if a use permit is granted, even if the use hasn't commenced, it's protected for a certain period of time by a due process requirement should the city found change its file. Next slide. So continuing on this, development agreements are kind of a unique element that a developer and a city can kind of lock in rights or additional requirements beyond what the code would normally allow or the law would normally allow. So these are essentially private contracts or they're publicly entered into and it's a discretionary action, but they're a contract between the city and the developer that establishes elements that are in place at that point in time, even if things change into the future. So it sets the standards, the development standards, the existing fees. It might provide an additional extension or time period for an approval. If a developer thinks a project's going to take a long time to implement, but the city is, is interested in making that approval, then you can use a development agreement in order to grant additional time to that, that developer. It also allows the city to seek additional benefits for the public and the community beyond what would normally be allowed. And this action is subject to referendum. It must be done in full public disclosure. Public hearings are required. And like everything that is decided by the city, it must be consistent with the general plan. And findings are required to be made to talk about how it's compatible. But it's not a separate project under CEQA. Next slide. So findings, you've heard us talk a lot about findings. So these are required for quasi judicial projects. And so these are the use permits and the design reviews, et cetera. The specific findings are identified in each ordinance that establishes the use permit process or the design review process. But you'll see when staff brings a resolution or an ordinance forward to recommend approval of a vote, there's project-specific elements that are written into those findings in the resolution that talk about how the project implements these things that the ordinance says the city is desiring. And so that's very important for planners to do when they are writing resolutions to bring forward to the city council or the planning commission. Because if they're not project-specific, then that, that decision is very weak and is subject to legal challenge. Legislative acts do not often require findings because they're more in that non- quasi judicial, so quasi legislative mechanism. It's policy. But some statutes or some individual ordinances will say you must have findings in order to adopt these. And if so, then it's the planner's job to, to write that into the, the ordinance. The record must contain evidence to support those findings. And so that's what I talked about. The planner will write, tie the project to the approval in the resolution. And then the supporting documentation in the plans, project description, staff report, et cetera, will support that, including the environmental documents that, that JP was just talking about. And so I, I left this one in. This is a statement from another attorney I worked with. And he said, "This provides the best home court advantage in the law." So when, when the city has established their policy saying what they want to do, consistent with the general plan, ties an individual project back to how that's being implemented through these findings, that is a very legally justified and legally supportable decision that the city's making. And that's why it's important that they be project-specific. Next slide. So this is kind of the, gets into some of the elements of a taking. So this ties all the way back to constitutional law. And, you know, the prohibition events of government taking private property without just compensation. So there's a court case and a lot of these things, as JP mentioned, court cases kind of influence land use decisions. And, and the land use law kind of shifts a little bit as case law develops or supports or sometimes pushes back on the government's ability to regulate different elements of land use. So Agans is one of these where it talks about, I'm sorry, I have to look at my notes here. And so is Agans versus Timperon, it disestablished a two-part test for what is a taking. And so it's, one, is the effort or the requirement advancing legitimate interests of the city? So that's what nexus is. And you hear us talk about the nexus a lot of times between maybe the requirement for the developer to build a sidewalk and their request to subdivide the property. Or denies the landowner the economic viability, viable use of their land. Lingold is a, is a second case, which actually eliminated that two-part test down to just a single test and it simplified it, saying, is it denying a landowner the economic viability, viable use of their land? And so the city is allowed to change a property from residential to agricultural, for example, because that land use of agriculture still provides a economically viable use of that property. And so that would not be a taking under the law. But if the city were to choose to make some type of decision that was found to be a taking, we are subject to providing damages as the remedy for that violation. Next slide. So exactions, so similar to what I just talked about with the sidewalk. These are things that are imposed on development to mitigate negative impacts of that development on the community. And so a good example is, you know, someone wants to subdivide the property, that's going to put a lot more residents on that area of, of the community. And so the city has the ability to exact from them land for public sidewalks. Maybe the need even for a public street running through that property in order to serve it. That is 100% legally justifiable. And in California, the city can even make that developer build the infrastructure. You'll hear me say, if you haven't yet, that developers tend to build a lot of the infrastructure that cities then maintain into the future tied to their projects. And the Kessing Ranch subdivision is a good example. There's a lot of public streets and sidewalks that are built as a part of that subdivision that will become the community asset, serving the surrounding neighborhood and allowing folks to utilize that property. That was an exaction that came directly tied to the city granting the subdivision the ability of the developer to create those lots and, and build those additional homes. Again, it gets back to developments are privileged, not a right. And so the city has the ability to kind of mitigate the impacts of development on a community, not just through CEQA, but also through exactions and other things. However, it must bear a reasonable relationship to the impacts of the project. So we couldn't have asked the Kessing Ranch folks to buy some land over, you know, on the west side of town for something unless there was a significant nexus or relationship between the public benefit or need of that purchase on the west side of town and the public impacts to that development. And some of these things are spoken about in the Mitigation Fee Act. There's a government code reference there. But sometimes there can, and I should say, this can also include in-lube payments or impact fees as a mechanism for the, for the city to offset the impacts of that development. And sometimes, as you can imagine, there's a fine line between an exaction and a taking. And so you'll see us working with the city attorney. We're trying to be very thoughtful in how we craft language to make sure we stay on the right side of that line. I'll go to the next slide. So this is just the summary of kind of the rights of the public to participate in this. The, the public in this case being property owners that maybe the city is asking for exactions or applicants who are asking the city to make approvals for things. So obviously they have a notice to a hearing. They have a, I'm sorry, there's a right to a notice of the hearing and the hearing itself. The city is required to make findings tying that decision to the established ordinances that the city has governing whatever element that they're requesting. That hearing must be fair and meet the established criteria of due process. There's a lot of other regulations that govern this, so the Brown Act. You all are very familiar with the Brown Act. You know, all conversations regarding an action have to be made in the public. There's some criteria on staff here as far as how fast we have to act or how responsive we have to be when someone does file an application and formally request action. There's a requirement that we share information with the public if they want to see kind of our deliberations and, and the files that we have reviewing these requests. CEQA, JP just went into a very informative element of that. But that is, that is a right of the public, as he mentioned. A big part of CEQA is public disclosure. And then obviously they have the right to challenge any decision, whether it's for or against through initiative and referendums. And all the way up to the state level in California, as you are all well aware. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to and introduce senior planner Joel Galbraith, who's come on with us part-time on a limited term basis to help us out with some of our housing policy work and our projects. And he's going to talk about housing.
Can you hear me? Next slide, please. Yeah, I want to go over housing. And as you probably are aware, housing is a top priority in the state of California. And this slide, our state legislative, I'd call them directives or declarations. And the number one is that the availability of housing is of vital statewide importance. This requires the cooperative participation of the government and the private sector to accommodate the housing needs of all Californians at all economic levels. Number three, the state and local governments have a responsibility to use their powers vested in them to facilitate the development of housing to meet the needs of the community, as well as accommodating the city's share of the regional housing needs. And the last one is state law requires cities such as Cattati to include a general plan housing element that removes various constraints to housing development. Next slide, please. And the state housing and community development department has four general goals that we need to abide by. It's, number one is provision of new housing. Number two, preservation of existing housing and neighborhoods. Number three, reduction of housing costs. And number four, improvement of housing conditions for special needs groups. And these groups are typically seniors, farm workers, and transitional housing. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, Cattati's housing element, which is required by the state. And that commits the city to specific goals, policies, and actions of which many are required by newer state laws. Housing elements are reviewed and approved by housing and community development. So they are reviewed and approved by the state. So that makes them unique in that regard as far as the elements of the general plan. And as part of the housing element, the city must provide new housing sites, show where new housing sites are available. And that's based upon regional housing needs assessment, which is called RENA. So you'll be hearing about that in the future. And as Noah's already gone over, the city is, will be working on the, the next housing element, which needs to be approved by the city council by 2023. Another way of providing affordable housing is to encourage the development of second units, also called ADUs. In the past, these were also called granny units. And typically, these are units, small rental units that are part of a single-family home. They could be in the backyard above a garage. But these by design are typically affordable. The next one is density bonuses. And developers of housing projects, if they, if they provide a certain number of affordable units, which are contracted units, they are entitled to density bonuses. And that's an incentive for them to provide more housing. And the other type of affordable housing is called by right housing. So if also a developer proposes affordable housing and meets all of the city's objective standards, they can avoid going through any kind of a discretionary process. It's basically ministerial and their housing is approved by right. So that's something that will be talked, you'll be seeing more of that in the future. Next slide, please. Okay, we have two specific housing programs in Cattati. And when I mean specific to Cattati, these are allowed by state law, but they're not required by state law. A lot of housing programs that we see are required by state law, but these two are not required. Number one is growth management. And this limits the number of new dwellings developed within a calendar year. And in Cattati, that is a maximum of 100 lae per year with 25 lae reserved for very low and low-income households. And this is related to health and safety issues. And it's basically to ensure that our growth is in line with the services we can provide. The next program we have here in Cattati is called inclusionary housing. And this requires new residential development to include affordable units. And this can be done through actually building the units onsite or offsite. They can also dedicate land that's equivalent. Or for small projects, typically it's a pavement of an in-lube fee. And in some cases, that project can use a combination of all of these to, that are, credits all equivalent providing the units. Next slide, please. So this is a, a list of the current housing trends and issues we're seeing currently. And over the last year, we've seen a rise in construction costs. That's, a lot of that's due to the supply issues. And household incomes have not risen near as much as construction costs. So that's causing somewhat of a, a problem for developers being able to build the housing that's affordable to our residents. So that's the current issue we're, we're dealing with now. The next one is mixed-use development. This mixed-use development started about 30 years ago. And it was seen as a way to have more walkable communities, more center-city growth. And it was seen as a way to have more walkable communities, more center-city growth. And the thought was that the mixed-use development, which consists of residential and retail and commercial uses, that the retail commercial can help subsidize the residential, make the residential more affordable. And the current trend, the reason there's a question mark here with the current trends that we're seeing now with commercial and retail development, things are changing in the marketplace. So we may be seeing less, there may be less demand for this type of use as we're seeing changes. So some of these projects you see around the county, some of them have been successful. And you see other projects in the county where the retail portions are mostly vacant. So I would say overall, in the last 30 years in the county, this has been kind of a mixed bag. The current trends for infill development with city-centered growth, we do have parcels in our community that have been, I would call them somewhat leftover. They've been bypassed by developers in the past, and these are within established neighborhoods. So in the future, we're going to see more of these properties being developed. And typically, when they are developed, they do not match the surrounding neighborhood. And this is often an issue for the existing neighbors. So typically, these types of developments get a lot of, have a lot of public involvement. Also, the trend we're seeing throughout the state is higher densities and reduced parking. And typically, developers can, if they do affordable housing, they can get density bonuses. And they can get parking reductions, especially if their project's near transit. And typically, these can be issues for neighbors because they're getting more density than it was planned for by the city. And also, they felt there may be parking impacts on their neighborhood. So that's one of the, but it is a trend that we're seeing throughout the state. So I mentioned previously, we're seeing less discretionary review with residential projects. And this is coming from the state. It's basically to make it easier for developers to build more housing quicker and more cost-effective. So it's up to the cities to establish objective standards that can be measured. And if a developer meets all of the objective standards and state criteria, then they get their project approved and they go straight to building permit. So that'd be, without going through any kind of a public review process. So we're going to be seeing more of this in the future. And we're also, cities are trying to come up with more creative methods to incentivize housing development. And some cities have tried priority processing. Also, different kinds of housing, smaller houses, micro apartments. Some cities have used container housing, where shipping containers have been transformed into housing units. So those are different things that we're seeing now as creative methods to try to get more affordable housing. Next slide, please. And these are the, is a list for your, as a resource that you can see, these are the various government code sections that relate to housing in the state. And that concludes my presentation. Next slide.
Is that it from all three of you?
That is, we are available for any questions. I know that was a lot, and I'm sorry, but thank you to staff for keeping it within the timeframe. But we're happy to elaborate. We're happy to let it sink in and let you guys have dinner. But just know that things are, there's a lot there, I know. And there's a lot that goes into all the work that staff does to bring you your decisions. And sometimes, you know, when staff may look to the attorney for clarity or ask for where we can have limitations or where we must kind of be a little bit more flexible, it's because of all of the things that we talked about that are kind of going into the regulations we have. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or field them by the other staff members.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, JP. Thank you, Joel and the staff for that presentation. Looks like we do have a question from council member Ford.
Thanks. I just, a quick one about potential conflicts between our limit of 100 units a year housing permits and any RENA requirements, say, we're getting to the end of the cycle. I assume we'd have to open that up if the developer came along and wanted to sort of go over the top of that, but it was still within our RENA requirements?
Yeah, so that's a good question. I don't know the legal answer to that. I will say growth management is something that the state is looking at very critically. And right now, there is no penalty if you do not meet your RENA. But I don't know that that's going to be the case for the foreseeable future. So if that was the case, staff would likely be coming to the council to talk about that very specific issue and exploring where there is flexibility.
Yeah, I think there, I think there's SB 330 might impact the city's growth control ordinance at least through 2025 as well. So Noah and I should take a look at that with Joel. I do know, like as Noah said, that HCD has been pretty aggressive about going after growth control measures like that. It's a significant legal issue, though. If the voters had approved a growth control measure like that, it's kind of difficult for the state to override that without any legislative authorization for doing so. But if they can find that it, you know, you're not able to provide housing for all economic segments of the community, they might be able to disapprove your housing element or not certify your housing element as the correct terminology.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions for staff or our city attorney? I don't know if we have any attendees that have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. We do have two attendees. And just as a reminder, you can use your raised hand icon or dial star nine from your telephone. And it appears there's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions myself. Noah, when you were talking about the referendum around the initiative process in the city, in cities, that they can bypass CEQA and things like that. If you have a referendum or an initiative that's passed by the voters, but it's in conflict with your general plan, what happens there?
I'm excited to hear what city attorney Barker has to say about that.
Well, I'm happy to answer that. If there's an initiative measure that's placed on the ballot that's inconsistent with the general plan, it's invalid. So everything has to be consistent with the general plan. The thing, though, is that most competent drafters of initiative measures will amend the general plan to make it consistent with the initiative measure. But if somebody managed to get ballot measure on the ballot that was inconsistent with the general plan and was enacted by the voters, somebody, the city or a third party, could go to court and invalidate it.
We have an existing measure that was passed a few years back regarding roundabouts that seems to be inconsistent with our general plan in reference to being conscious of our climate, et cetera. So maybe that's something we want to look at and see what can, if that is in fact in conflict with the general plan. And then you said there was a, and I want to make sure that I understood this correctly, Noah. You indicated that CEQA applies to city and state projects. And then I thought, it almost seemed like that that was abbreviated in that, in my understanding of that. Could you elaborate that a little bit more? Is it anything that's a development within the city or within the jurisdiction of the state that CEQA would apply?
Generally, yes. But there are specific carve-outs for, I mean, it's really interesting. There's a, it's called a statutory exemption, and even talks about like efforts to implement the Olympic Games in Los Angeles, right? So there's, where the legislature just specifically says, we're not going to require CEQA for that. And then there's categorical, where certain categories of projects, like extension of a sewer line less than a mile. And then now, I would say, the legislature's making a lot of housing projects, trying to support housing and streamline that process, giving them certain exemptions under a variety of criteria. And then I would just see if JP has anything he'd like to add to that.
If I understood the question, it applies to any action by a public agency that, where there's a potential impact to the environment. I would say that's, with the exception of where there's these exemptions. That's where CEQA applies, and only within the state of California.
Okay, thank you, JP. I did have another question. In the slide, you talked about development agreements, DAs. And DAs can be subject to referendum. So if you have a development agreement, i.e. a, oh, I don't know, let's call it a Lucky's or something like that. And then you have a referendum that comes into city and says, now, we're not going to have a development of that size. Then that referendum could potentially override that development agreement?
The, I can answer this one. The development agreement itself is subject to referendum. So the act that council's taking to approve that development agreement is subject to referendum. So if enough voters got together and signed a petition to referend that thing, that would be placed on the ballot. And, well, actually, the council has a choice to undo the decision. So you can either undo the decision or put it on the ballot. And if that question was on the ballot and the voters approved the referendum, then the development agreement would not go into effect. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that the project itself that was associated with that development agreement was also referended. Those, sometimes people pursuing referenda make mistakes and don't referend the whole project. They only reference certain aspects of it. So the project wouldn't die unless somebody referended the whole, the whole project. The development agreement really only vests the rights of the developer to, it protects that entitlement for a period of time set out in the development agreement. It doesn't, that's all it does. It generally doesn't do any more than that. So the entitlement itself has a life, separate and apart from the development agreement.
Thank you so much. And I only ask that because even though we're a small city, you know, we would never have any of those issues going on in Qatadi. Unless there are any further questions, I would thank everybody for their participation. I especially want to thank the council members and the staff or the planning commission members. Welcome, Mr. Rodriguez. That's quite an introduction. Thank you all for participating and thank you staff for that presentation. I think it's a nice, for those that have been around, it's a nice refresher. And for those that are new, it's, kind of puts it into a nice little perspective there. So unless there's any other questions, we will go ahead and adjourn and then come back for our city council meeting at seven. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Okay.